Five seconds. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Orange County School Board's regularly scheduled meeting this Tuesday, June 22, 2021. Thank you so much for being here and joining us tonight. Members, most of our board members are here in person. So let me take a quick roll call of our entire board and see who we have with us today. I think we have two board members who unfortunately are not going to be able to attend. Let's begin with Member Gallo, and I believe Member Gallo is not attending with us today. Member Lopez also is not able to join us. Member Cobert.
Good afternoon, Chair.
Thanks for joining us, Member Cobert. Vice Chair Gould.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Member Felder.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Member Castor-Dale.
Good afternoon, Chair.
And Member Bird.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. So we do have a quorum. I also want to mention that board members will not be engaged in outside electronic or digital communication during the meeting, so we can focus on the business before us. If you are trying to reach us through text, emails, or other means, please recognize that you will not hear back from board members until the conclusion of the meeting. To my fellow board members, district staff members, anyone who will be speaking tonight, let me remind you to do as I do, as sue as I say, not as I do, and speak directly into the mic. If you do like I do from time to time and turn your head sideways, it becomes harder to hear. So speak as close as you can to the mic, so that not only those in the room can hear us, but also our Orange TV viewers can also hear. And now, I would invite you to join us in a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Legions. And now for the pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the banner of liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Jenkins, do we have any newly appointed administrators to recognize this afternoon?
We do, Madam Chair. Let me introduce quickly, we have Cara Beckherms, who will be the new AP at OCPS Academic Center for Excellence, Pranchella Lewis, who will be the new AP at East River, Thalia Mack, who will be the new Assistant Principal at College Park Middle, Rachel Mott, who will be the new AP at Sadler Elementary, Susan Shaw, new AP at West Point Elementary, Bradley Schreffler, new AP at Evans High School, Amanda Stewart, new AP at Lakemont Elementary School, Corey Bowden, new Assistant Principal at Rolling Hills, I'm sorry, new Principal at Thornbrook Elementary, Joshua Bing, new Principal at Conway Middle, Malik Jerome Brown, new Principal at Maitland Middle, Jessica Camara, Assistant Principal at Rolling Hills Elementary, Angelo Feliciano, Principal at Eccleston Elementary, Jason Jimenez, Principal at Legacy Middle, Randall Glenn Longhouse, Principal at Wedgefield K8, Natasha Pender, Principal at Lancaster Elementary, Melanie Simmons, Principal at Rock Lake Elementary, Eric Unger, Principal at McCoy Elementary, and Rebecca Anne Idvobnik, Principal at Ridgewood Park Elementary.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Well, we welcome all of them to their new roles, wish them well, but I have utmost confidence, because I know the superintendent, deputy superintendent wouldn't be moving them into these positions if they didn't have that same confidence. Dr. Jenkins, we are going to begin with our strategic plan update, so let me turn the podium over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, it is time for what we promised you a while back, after we went through our evaluation for accreditation. We have here today Cognia Representative/CEO, Dr. Mark Elgart, who is going to walk you through that accreditation. As you are well aware, we did receive our accreditation once again from Cognia. For those who are familiar, it was previously Advanced Ed, and so we're very pleased to have another five-year cycle of accreditation. Dr. Elgart, if I might introduce him, President/CEO of Cognia, he will present an overview of the engagement review and will share the powerful practices and areas for improvement identified by the review team. Dr. Elgart has served as President/CEO since 2002 for Cognia. He's a long career of distinguished positions in education, forty-plus years as an educational leader, including time as a mathematics and physics teacher, school principal and chief executive leading a global education nonprofit. He is annually recognized both locally and internationally as an influential leader in education due to his impact on education policy and the work of schools. He is an internationally recognized speaker on education and frequent author on educational issues, including recent white papers on federal policy and school improvement. In education, Dr. Elgart is widely viewed as the foremost authority on school improvement and education quality. We are very pleased to have him with us here in person, since our accreditation was done largely remotely because of the pandemic. We are very pleased to welcome Dr. Elgart.
Thank you, Superintendent Jenkins, Chair Jacobs, members of the board, Superintendent Jenkins, your staff, and members of the community. It's an honor to be here this afternoon to share in person the results of the engagement review. Orange County is a school system that has much to be proud of, and I look forward to sharing some of our observations with you in the next few minutes, as well as its commitment to continuous improvement. And in that light, provide you with, from the professional view of the engagement review team, recommendations to improve the system. Accreditation is a journey. In fact, it's the most widely-used school improvement process in the world. It is not an event, it is part of a process that never ends, and Orange County has been part of that process. And the actual engagement review is a feature of that process that differentiates it from all other school improvement processes. See, accreditation as a school improvement process includes the planning that the district has done, for instance, its strategic planning, but the process itself, the engagement of activities, actions, strategic objectives established, and reaching those goals and achieving better outcomes, is part of this journey. And there are two aspects that make accreditation different for the board members. First, it's a standards-based process. It's based on standards that identify what a good school and school system does regularly. Second, it includes professional feedback, so that you're getting independent professional feedback from people from the educational community. So during this journey, what were the types of things that Orange County engaged in? First, had a period of self-analysis and reflection, where they examine themselves with the community, with the members of the board. What do we do well, and where do we want or need to improve on behalf of students? Then you engage in this external evaluation, where we provide direction. But we also acknowledge what you do well, and how well you do it, and what impact what you do well is having on students, and how you can leverage your strengths to improve areas of need. And those strengths are recognized through powerful practices, and then we provide you improvement areas. Now, one of the elements of this engagement review in particular, it came on the heels of a strategic planning process. So one of the first things that the team had to do was acknowledge the strategic planning of the district and identify, was this process comprehensive, collaborative? Did it provide a vision for the future that is consistent with Orange County based on the data that it analyzed? And without exception, we said, yes, this is the appropriate direction for this district, which then challenged us as a team to provide direction that would be aligned with where you're headed as a school system, that would strengthen the efforts for you to achieve the objectives in your strategic plan. Now is a point in time where the district must consider and integrate those areas of improvement, not to go in a different direction, but to further the direction you've already committed to within your strategic plan. And after we leave, it incumbent upon the district and its leadership to monitor and report the progress of the system in addressing those areas for improvement. Some points of interest, the preparedness by the staff was outstanding. And I tell you, I've been doing this longer than I should admit, for over thirty years, and I've been in a number of schools and systems around the world. And when I say that preparation was outstanding, it was probably among the best I've ever encountered. And that's a credit from the superintendent to every member of the staff that was involved in this process. It made our work both easier in the fact that it was accessible, easily organized, but more challenging because of the comprehensive nature in which the county looked at itself and really dug deep to address the strengths and areas for improvement. It provided evidence of the system's work extensively. And probably took me about five weeks of looking almost, well, every day. It was like reading a couple of books back-to-back of going through all the evidence that the district provided. But it was well organized, and it made sense to the direction they were headed and what you've recently experienced. But that nature of that evidence laid the groundwork for everything to happen. We actually did something a little bit different in this review, because A, it was virtual, but B, we actually began the review thirty days before the onsite component of it, or the interview component of it. So our team started meeting thirty days prior, and we began to dive into the evidence. We had meetings deliberating around the evidence, and really had a good picture of the district before we began to engage all of you. The second component is, we actually extended the interviews over a four-day period rather than a three-day period. And during that period of time, it gave us the opportunity to interview five hundred and seventy-six people in this community, from students at all levels, to teachers, to administrators, central office, leadership, members of the board, which I remember our interviews with all of you, but members of the community as well. And in the community, we had people who had kids in school, we had people who were just business leaders in the community, and were supporting the many partnerships that the district has been able to engage in. We also engaged in over forty hours of deliberation during that week and shortly after that week. A district of this size and complexity deserved all of our attention, and we wanted to encompass, which we did, I believe, very effectively, the perspectives of the stakeholders in their view of this district. When we look at a school system or an individual school, we look for the evidence of what a good school does. First, there's evidence of learner engagement. Are kids engaged in learning? Are all kids? Do kids have ownership in their learning? Do they have agency over their learning? My most enjoyable part of any review is when we get to talk to the kids. I could just do that all week, because the kids give you a sense of their real experience, of what they have accomplished, where they've struggled, what they think of school, how school can be better. Ask a kid, what can we do to improve school? They'll always have an opinion. And usually, that opinion will be pretty much on target. And so we were able to gain that, even though we weren't able to be physically in the classroom. And that's a caveat here that also challenged us, because normally, we can go in and watch the learning environment happen. So we had to depend on those interviews of kids to really describe their learning experience. But we discovered through those engagements, the kids do have agency over their learning. Kids take ownership for their learning, and they brought voice to their learning. The second area, which the district has an abundance of data, is evidence of growth in learning. Do we have evidence that kids are growing in their learning? And it's more than just an achievement score, a test result. You want to see evidence in as kids transition between grades, as kids transition between schools. Are they ready for that transition? Are they prepared to move on? Are they ready to move on from high school to college, or the world of work, or career tech? And we look for evidence to ensure that kids are ready and prepared. Beyond the testing of knowledge, we also look for skill development. Are kids developing skills around collaboration, communication, problem-solving, looking for those skills that become lifelong, that enable them to learn for the rest of their life, whether it's in a formal structure called school, or just everyday life as an adult? The third area we look for evidence is their leadership for learning. Quite frankly, that begins with all of you. Are you providing leadership? That learning is the most important activity in Orange County schools, that the focus of the board in your deliberations, the primary focus of your being on the board is to provide leadership for learning, because that's the primary activity and reason for being for the county school system. We certainly found that in the interviews of the board members. And then certainly engaging Dr. Jenkins as superintendent, her powerful vision going forward for this district, her longstanding commitment as superintendent to this district, she sets the tone as the number-one learner in this district. And it's really important that she model learning, not just for herself as superintendent, but for entire staff and for every child who attends an Orange County school. So we look for leadership for learning across the entire domain. And then a healthy culture. One of the things that the stakeholder groups brought to us, especially when we talked to parents, community members, partners in education, business leaders, did they see themselves, or did they feel as though they were part of this school system, that they were part of the culture, that they could contribute to the culture of the school system? And we heard, without exception, their passion, their belief, and their knowledge of what the school system's trying to accomplish, where the school system's strengths were, and where there are areas of improvement. There's very little significant difference in opinion. You always have differences in opinion, but when you peel back what they were trying to tell us, we heard continuity in their vision for the future, we heard consistency in the expectations for kids, although the stakeholders did identify that they want a clearer picture of those expectations, and I'll get to that later in my presentation. But they found themselves as a contributing factor that could help kids be successful in the school system. And that was one of the most key indicators of a healthy culture, that they saw they had a role to contribute to help kids succeed, whether they had a kid in the system or not. Over the period of about five years, we studied every evaluation outcome in all of our schools across the world, and we work with over thirty-six thousand schools in eighty-five countries. And through this process, we learned a lot. We learned a lot about the previous slide about what good schools do, but also learned what continuous improvement really is. And I share this with you, because continuous improvement is embedded behavior within the culture of the school. One of the most demonstrative observations that we experience with Orange County is how continuous improvement is deeply embedded in the culture of these schools and school system. It is the language in which people interact every day, is the actions that people commit to, all for the focus on helping kids succeed. And they focus their attention on, how can we make conditions, processes, how can we improve teaching and learning, the entire focus. So if there was a school system that embodied this definition, Orange County is it, in every way. And it's an important attribute that you should never lose as a system, because it will enable you to always get better, which is something as a system you never want to stop doing. Getting better is very challenging. The other thing that we came out of this research is, what does it take to achieve lasting and effective change, and successful change? And if, when you read the report, you're going to notice some levels of numbers about whether you're impacting or improving. And we look for schools to be at least at the improving, and in some cases impactful, level. But to really create change, there are five stages. One is, first, you have to involve people in actually practicing the change. Second, you have to allow them to do it with enough practice to get good at it. You know, it's like, you want to learn how to play tennis or golf. You know, you first have to start practicing, and then you have to start doing it with some success. The third level of change is, you have to get some results with it. You have to get results that say, wait, maybe I can do this. The fourth level of change, you have to sustain those results over a period of time. And the fifth level, it has to just become who you are or the way you are. It becomes deeply embedded. For instance, as leaders come into an organization, in this case, a school or school system, a lot of leaders introduce change. The ability for that change to outlast the leader is dependent on that change to become part of the culture. And what you listen for and you watch for is, when people start to introduce the change, they first associate, well, that was the superintendent's initiative. She wants that to occur. We're doing pretty well here. And the last part of that change is, oh, that's just the way we do things around here. They're no longer associating with, that was the superintendent's initiative. I got to get in front of the mic. I'm just doing the same thing you asked me not to do. It's now us. We're doing it. It's not the superintendent's initiative. It's just the way we do things in Orange County. A lot of what you're doing is headed in that direction, some of it's landed in that, but you still have areas. And when you read the report, you'll find, well, you'll see a three, and you'll say, ah, we should be a four here. No, you haven't quite reached this final stage, where it's no longer attributed to the leadership. It's attributed to, that's the way we do things in Orange County. So it's just, you're on the right path, you have to keep doing it. Some key observations, which are strengths of this system, you are a mission-driven, student-focused school system. You'd think that was something you'd say about every school system, but it's not. It is an attribute which makes you decidedly better than many school systems. You've engaged multiple stakeholder groups, and it's this data-driven, people know the data, they understand it, and they're looking at a lot of different sets of data. They're not just depending on the state data, on the results of the state test. I know that came out today, the governor released that. They're looking at a lot of data that pertains to the work of students in this district, and that they see continuous improvement as a collaborative, a collective effort. You provide opportunities for students to accelerate achievement. Give you an example, Jones High School, the community partnership, where student access to physics. But you also, you know, one of the things you do is, you test every kid for, exceptional students, the, I'm losing the word there, the what? Gifted program. Thank you, E.G. Every student gets tested for gifted. Now, for you, that's just the way you do things in Orange County. Probably ninety-five percent of school systems in the country don't test every kid. And it's the example that you're giving every student, every student, the opportunity to accelerate their achievement. That's a strength. You invest in your people. You invest in your people to become better leaders, better teachers, better educators, and you align it with the needs of your students. You don't just throw out a professional learning opportunity, this ties into the last bullet there, and say, you know, take what interests you. The actual offerings align with the strategic direction of the district and the needs of students. And that's critically important, because you want an aligned system where everybody's moving towards that common direction. Your curriculum is standards-based, systemic, and you have an instructional framework that is very comprehensive, that is supported by a balanced assessment system. So teachers have the ability to know today how well their students are doing in their class, and to align it with instructional planning and instructional changes necessary to help kids learn. There are two major outcomes beyond the actual accreditation that we want to pay close attention to as a result of our reports. One are powerful practices. These are practices that are beyond the norm in which we would see in an effective school or school system. These are strengths that set you apart from your colleagues in other school or school systems. First is, as I mentioned earlier, you have leadership that drives a unified culture. You're a purpose-driven mission, and you have this unyielding, that word is deliberately chosen, commitment to success, which means you want to be more successful tomorrow than you were yesterday. Yes, you've gotten, you know, ninety-plus percent of your kids to graduation, but there's still room for improvement. Yes, you've dramatically increased in all categories achievement levels, but you want and see areas for greater improvement. And it's that unyielding commitment to success that permeates from the board all the way to the individual classroom. You have really an authentic and impactful commitment to continuous improvement, as I mentioned earlier, and one of the strengths there that we often don't see, which really set you apart, is the involvement of parents and business partners to the strategic efforts. You can see it a lot in school systems, where their staff is deeply committed to it, especially the leadership, and the board is connected, but it's getting to those additional stakeholder groups that often is a missing piece. And you see it in this district between parents and business people. A forward-thinking culture. Why were you able to, as difficult as it was, and it was historic, to pivot when COVID hit to online? And you had your struggles, as everybody did, but your struggles, as much as you think they were significantly pronounced, you didn't struggle as much as others, because of your forward-thinking culture. You had some reliable dependencies, for instance, technology, accessibility of technology. There were some districts that, for the first time, they were putting technology in the hands of their kids. And they struggled. For the first time, teachers were asked to use technology to support instruction, and they struggled. Your forward-thinking culture, although it still was a significant challenge, you were able to make adjustments and adapt, probably better than you'll ever admit, because you're going to be your own worst critic during that time. The community's going to be your own worst critic, because you experienced this very real and very dysfunctional period of time for all of us. But this district went through it with far greater grace, far greater trust, and far greater success than a lot of districts. The other area that's really important is how you allocate resources. Resources here, you can see the way resources are allocated lines directly up with the needs of students, not with what neighborhoods feed into what schools. And where, you know, we have a lot of districts where there is inequities across it, because either it's an equal distribution when the areas of need are not equal, or the richer parts of a district just get richer. And there's been a very deliberate approach to ensure that the allocation of resources is directly aligned with student needs. There is areas for improvement there, and you're still got some areas where you're struggling, because equity is one of those moving targets. It's not a constant. And when you think you have it figured out, you got new students, you got new families, you had the, you know, significant influx of people who moved to Orlando in the last five to seven years, and you've got a continuing, growing community. So equity is a moving target. What is very important for a board is you establish policy and a commitment to it, to ensure you constantly are looking at it, so that you can continue to practice and allocate resources aligned with the equitable needs of your students. The last area is the system's values by stakeholders at all levels to be inclusive. Think about the diversity that exists in this district. And one of the things that was not unique, but uncharacteristic in a lot of America's school systems is, those who are leading our school systems, including board members, do not reflect the diversity of the district in which they're leading. You can't say that about Orange County. You have diversity in your students, you have a growing diversity in your educators, and diversity in your leadership that's growing. And there is an intentional effort to ensure that you have consistency in all stakeholder groups, so that people are included in the culture, because you have a culture that is rich in its diversity, you have a culture that is rich in its experiences, you have a culture that is rich in its traditions, all of which must be honored in authentic and real ways. And it's one of the strengths of which Orange County brings to this, is your openness to have and your commitment to an inclusive culture. One of the benefits, I believe, and I've done this work for a long time, is when we come in to evaluate, we we don't just evaluate and tell you what you're not doing well. Or we don't just come in and evaluate and tell you what you've already accomplished. We look at what you're doing well, and we look at that in the context that those are the incredible and important levers, sorry, that you should use to address areas where you need improvement. So the very strengths that I've already identified are also the keys to unlocking your ability to make improvement in areas that I'm going to share with you that need improvement. There's been a lot of effort, and one of the things that I respect greatly of the superintendent and her staff is their ability to do what's necessary, even at times innovate and take risks to try something out to see if it works. And a lot of school systems freeze in their ability to do that, and they just continue to do things the same way year in and year out. I cannot say that about Orange County. The willingness to take risks to reach more kids, to help kids succeed, is a strength. But in doing so, you have a lot of initiatives happening right now. You need to take a step to make sure you know exactly what's working, why it's working, and how to sustain it so that it becomes part of the way you work. And to determine what's not working as well as you may think. You might have three or four initiatives targeting a similar demographic of students. It's important for you to distinguish between those initiatives and know which one is having a greater impact than the other, and what might need adjustment, and also what might need to be discontinued. So formal program evaluation is critical. In a district of this size, data alone will not provide you with enough information to make this type of decision. You need a formal process of program evaluation to ensure that what stays and is sustained and embedded is the right effort and the right initiative. The second area is, and we started to get a sense of this when we went through the evidence, but it was really, um, became crystal clear, especially among the business partners and community members, who wanted a better understanding of what success looked like. As they were supporting the school system with, with a lot of initiatives. Uh, some of it was substantial, uh, investment of, of funding. What does success look like beyond simply telling me that more and more kids are graduating high school? Because in their minds, success is more than just a high school diploma. It's the, the readiness and preparedness of every child to engage in college, go on the world of work, and be productive and successful adults. So as we listened throughout the system, I believe there's great benefit for this system to establish a profile for an, a successful learner at key points of transition throughout the district. So that first and foremost, the learner knows what success looks like. You're defining it clearly for the learner. Parent knows what success is going to be based on. The teachers, educators, community members, and all of you at the board. This goes beyond simply a high school diploma. You know, your scores from the state on a, on a state test, your ACT or SAT scores, your end of course, whatever it is, is beyond that. Is looking at both knowledge and skill acquisition that'll ensure and demonstrate that this child is ready and prepared for the next stage of learning or the world of work. And there are a lot of systems that have started to go to this. It is also something that you'll find commonly in IB programs, international baccalaureate. So if you look at private schools, and there's a lot more public schools in America that have gone to IB programs, it's a common characteristic of IB programs to have these learner profiles. And I gave the superintendent and her staff some examples to look at in this area. The third and last finding for improvement. There is one area, and it's, it's not unique, um, it continues to, uh, be a struggle, is ensuring that struggling students, particularly, uh, males of color, are gaining better success in the system, in their readiness and preparation. To ensure that they're able not only to graduate, but they're able to graduate with a level of knowledge and skills so they can carry forward to something either, you know, uh, college, whether it's community or four-year, whether it's the world of work, whether it's career technical, but that they have the knowledge and skills to leave Orange County to pursue something greater, to support their success as adults. This continues to challenge the system. There have been gains, and those were noted, uh, as we reviewed all the evidence. But it was also noted in the current strategic plan that this is, remains an area of need. One of the things that we would encourage there is you look at other school systems that have found greater success than yourselves, and look beyond Florida. Uh, you can look at school systems, um, uh, you have Wake County, uh, North Carolina has had, uh, some six, real strong success there. Uh, you look in Charlotte, North Carolina has had success. Uh, and I can find some others where I've seen, uh, some things that have worked for them. But, and I'll caution you here, it's, it's a context. Because you need to take some of those successes and put it in the context and culture in which they happen, and then do the same here in Orange County. You know your students better than anybody. And you may see something working someplace else, but you must target your success, target your strategies here to the actual context and culture in which these kids live every day. And so be careful that there's not an out-of-the-box solution that you're missing. And that's the challenge here. You have to actually come up with something that is unique to Orange County. You can see where success is elsewhere, and this is what a lot of schools and systems make the mistake of. Not contextualizing and personalizing your strategies to meet your community. Because your community is unique, you have a unique culture. You can learn from others, but you can't lift that strategy and just put it here and it will work. You have to look at the very assignment, for instance, of teachers in the classroom. You got to look at how instruction is delivered. You have to look at the time versus competency. You have a school system like Westminster in Colorado, who has gone to a competency-based education program, and it has tremendously helped kids, struggling students, because it's no longer time-based, it's competency-based, and they've learned a great deal from the benefits of competency. You have other systems that have brought in competency and integrated it, not in a hybrid way, not supplanted time-based, but integrated a more competency-based, more hands-on. So there's a number of areas you can look at here, but this is going to take some time. Uh, and it, I would tell you to be patient and persistent here. Uh, but it's going to take a conversation to, with your community. Uh, to, one of the things that we learned from business people was, and parents, uh, and other interested, uh, stakeholder groups, this is an area that they brought up more often than not. Was how do we reach these kids? We're struggling still with these kids, even though, you know, we've got this program and this program, there's not enough of these programs. And we still got kids falling through the cracks. Uh, so it's an area that's going to probably challenge you greater than any of the three areas we've mentioned. To conclude with, you have a responsibility now, as one of the largest accredited school systems in the country. You have a responsibility to review the findings, discuss what actions you're going to take in response to that, enact strategies to make those improvements, monitor them, uh, gather evidence and review the results, and determine your impact in that journey, in that I three rubric. And above all, continue to ensure community engagement. Through, through and with the community, you'll find greater success in these improvement efforts. So I want to conclude with, I want to congratulate you. You were fully accredited by the, uh, Global Commission. You also achieved an index of educational quality, I believe it was three hundred and fifty-seven out of a scale of, of, uh, one hundred to four hundred. It is extremely high. The average is in the high two hundreds, and you scored in the, uh, mid-three hundreds. It's a very high score, one of the highest achieved in quite some time. It's a recognition of the quality of the school system. You have much to be proud of, but knowing the superintendent, you also have much to improve. And that's one of the beauties and strengths of this school system. And it was an honor to lead the team and to engage the faculty, um, educational leaders, the students, and all of you in this process. Thank you.
Madam Chair, thanks to Dr. Elgar and his, um, team members that are here, as well as those who were present during the virtual time that they did our review. Also certainly want to publicly thank Dr. Vasquez, Dr. Sasser, and Dr. Showalter for helping, uh, lead us through, uh, this process. Staff has had this preliminary report for some time. I can assure you, we've already been working on those recommendations. Certainly want to make Dr. Elgar available to you if you have any questions at this time. But, uh, thanks to, uh, Dr. Elgar and his team for the investment of time and for coming back to actually bring us this report. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Vice Chair Gold.
Uh, thank you for this report. It's, it's always great to know that there's somebody who's got a, um, a really global view of education. Um, I, the superintendent, I know, is, is already has the team hard at work at looking at any opportunities that we have. But there's a couple of things that I think we should highlight, um, in, in, in things that you said. You talked about that educational alignment and how IB usually pathways those kids. You know, when you look at what's happening out in the, in the real world, in the job market, it's not about what's just on your resume for experience now. It's about skills-based hiring. So you may come from another field, and you have nothing to do with the field that you're going into, but you have the skill set because you're good at project management, you're good at time management, you're good at math, whatever those skills are that will translate well to a success in this new industry from your old industry. And I think with understanding that our ultimate matriculation is into the job market, no matter what the pathways are, the more that we can lift that skills-based opportunity and interest-based, which then makes learning more experiential, because I have an interest in what I'm learning, and finding alternatives other than when we have lower-level readers, you know, trying the same things all the time and doing it semester after semester. We've had that conversation. But, um, and I know we're breaking away from that, but I think there's still a lot of opportunity. And I'm actually going to be in Colorado in July, and I'd be really interested in seeing if I can make a connection out there to look at the competency. So, um, thank you for the report. I'm very excited about the things that came out of the report and how it truly does align with, with what's happening in the world of industry as well.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Sir, did you have any response? No, I didn't, it wasn't a question there, but you looked like you were.
No, no, I'm good, thank you.
Um, Dr. Kesterdahl.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, first, thank you so much for your in-depth, uh, investigation, evaluation, presentation. Um, it's, it was just so nice to just sit back and hear all the good stuff. I felt like a kid listening to their parents talking about them. So it made me very proud of our district and everyone who works in our district and works on behalf of our district and our students. Um, and I know we have an auditing department that will, um, look at some of our individual systems and kind of give the board reassurance that, you know, things are operating within our schools like we plan. But this objective, um, process and, uh, really, I think, gives our community, the broader community reassurance that, um, our district is really working at, uh, operating at high levels to educate our kids. Um, I want to make sure that, um, we celebrate this achievement. Not just that we were accredited, but that we really rock as a district. I think everyone, I think we should celebrate.
Yes, you should.
The feedback, and I know we're, we're sharing this information during the summer when a lot of our employees are not around. And I, I want to make sure that we extend this information and recognition to our school-based employees when they come back in the fall. I want them to see themselves in this report.
You're right.
Um, here we all are with board members, superintendent and, and academic chiefs, and, and we're all listening. We all get to hear it, but I want to make sure that, that they get that message. Um, and at the same time, I also want to make sure that we include our school-based employees in crafting solutions to target what you said that we need to work on. Um, we all do lots of research and compare it with different districts, but I have found in my experience that, um, a lot of our teachers already have solutions. Um, and I'd like to make sure that we involve them, that there's a, um, a procedure or a process that we actually target teachers and get that feedback and listen to their suggestions of what, what else we can do to help them achieve this next level. But thank you so much. I think I'm going to go home and replay this segment out loud. Thank you.
Excellent comments, member Kesterdahl. Member Felder.
Yes, first of all, again, as I, uh, reiterate what some of my fellow board members, uh, said, what an extensive report. And I was sitting back, and I was like, are you talking about us? Talking about Orange County? Uh, I, and especially, I just, you know, kind of hone in on, uh, what you said about, um, the recognition of powerful practices and, uh, the inclusiveness and really dealing with the impact, uh, the teaching and what we're doing with black males. Uh, my district, I, I'm having a town meeting the end of July, and I was writing down all of these things, I, you know. We're talking about some other things, but I, I want to open up with talking about, uh, the great things. And sometimes when you're out, you don't know, even as a teacher, sometimes you wonder what the impact is. And as, uh, uh, Board Member Kesterdahl said, I, I want teachers, principals alike, parents, to know, uh, that we're just not doing something and going through the motion, but there is a, uh, strategic on-purpose plan, and there, uh, is evaluation and that we know exactly what we're doing and what we need to work on. Um, the, the report wa- was just so in-depth, and, uh, I'm so grateful. And I want, I don't know, but I don't think many people really know, uh, what we're doing and the impact and the success that we're having to be, uh, uh, an accredited district. And, uh, I, I'm just, I'm just so very, very proud of what you said in sitting on this board, and it's my hope. I know that we have access to it, but I know I'm going to, uh, pull some of the things specifically and mention to the members of my constituency so they can see that they have a lot to be proud of, of this district and the leading of our superintendent. And thank you so much.
Well, I, I echo the comments of all of my board members who have spoken. It's interesting because I, I, we, we are, we have very, very common goals for, um, it's remarkable how unified this board is, um, and how unified the board is with the administration. Um, having served in different offices with sometimes more or less homogeneous goals, um, it's, makes life so much easier, it makes our jobs so much easier when we're all rowing in the same directions. But I have to admit, I'm a little surprised at the notes that I took down. And I'm listening to, um, Vice Chair, and I, I probably am also going out to Colorado this summer. And I took a note, but I didn't get the name of the district. And I had just like, I want to learn more about what they're doing in Colorado, I want to understand. Um, because I hear the words, but I can't quite picture how that works in the classroom. Um, and then, um, member Kesterdahl and member Felder.
I, I was also taking notes, thinking, we are going to have a state of, uh, OCPS in the fall. But I now know a lot more about what we're going to talk about. I knew we were going to talk about our challenges, um, and how we overcame them. And we, we had an opportunity to, to, to spend some time, as you all did, uh, but reflecting on my, my experience for sixteen years in Orange County. When I became mayor, I, I set the goal that I, I wanted us to be the best of the best in, in every area that county government performs. But measuring whether or not you're really the best of the best is far more difficult. The data often doesn't exist, the benchmarks aren't quite the same. And I don't think you do, county governments. But being here, for me, being always just sucking up data and just always.
But being here, for me, being always just sucking up data and just always wanting to see what data we have to confirm whether we're doing, whether we're accomplishing what we set out to, this was just a joy to see how much data there was. But until today, I didn't have the context to understand where we were relative to other districts. I get a sense from my conversations, from being part of the Council of Great City Schools, I get a sense of areas where we really have excelled. And even though, as you point out, COVID was difficult, I am constantly telling the public, it was difficult, but it wasn't near as challenging for OCPS and our students and our teachers as the rest of the world, because we were so well-prepared for this. But your report, I'm dying to read, but your presentation has left me, just like my fellow members, I'm ready to celebrate today and then get to work tomorrow on the ever, ever-changing, ever-improving nature of this district and the need for that. But I see, I mean, I hope that we all take this information, but I also hope that you, that we all get as many people as we can to the state of OCPS, because this, I want everybody, Member Kesterdennel, you nailed it so well, I want every parent, I want every teacher, I want every custodial worker, I want everybody in Orange County Public Schools to just have a moment to go, wow, we're really, we're really accomplishing a lot. Because I think in those moments of celebration, you also, you rejuvenate, you get that second wind, that energy to now, what can I do? You know, we've done so much, what can we do? I love bragging about the graduation rate, but I'm always thinking, now, how do we get to 100%? And is graduating enough, you know? And do they have all those skills? And for this board, it's not just academics. This board is really focused on, are our kids prepared, are they prepared for life? Not just for work, for life. And those are similar, but in some ways, they're quite different. So, thank you so much for what you do, because if it weren't for you, we wouldn't know if, where do we rank and how much more can we do? So this is just beyond words how invaluable this is. Please.
Let me leave you with one thought. Great school systems always know there's area for improvement. Great school systems always know there's areas for improvement. So when somebody will say, oh, you're not great because you don't, you're not doing it, that's an area for improvement. And that's what sets you apart. Don't ever lose that, because that's what will get you to your future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I remember when you asked that question, and I knew in my mind the most important area that we needed to improve on. And it is good to know where, if you don't know your weaknesses, you will never become what you're capable of being, so no question about that. God bless you. Thank you for this.
Thank you.
This is awesome.
All right. Take care.
All right. Yeah, we don't, yeah. All right. I feel like telling all the staff that's here in the room, to everybody to stand up and take a bow for a minute. Do that. Stand up and take a bow for a minute, okay? James, I'm talking to you too. Everybody. All right. All right. This is, I'm the school board chair. I know I'm not the superintendent, but I'm going to try this one more time. All y'all, stand up that work for Orange County Public Schools and take a bow. Thank you, James. Thank you, Jim. Awesome. All right. Dr. Jenkins. Oh, my goodness. Consent agenda, or adoption of the agenda, are there any changes to the agenda that the board needs to be aware of?
Madam Chair, there is one change to the agenda from Item 603 from the matrix. Student J A R needs to be moved to non-consent, Item 1702.
Thank you so much. All right. With that noted change, is there a motion to amend the agenda as proposed by the superintendent? Motion by Vice Chair, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Member Byrd, all in favor of the motion to amend the agenda as recommended by the superintendent? Please say aye.
Aye.
And Member Cobert?
Aye, Chair.
Thank you. And the motion passes with all members present voting in the affirmative. Next, if we can take up the Item 1701, non-consent agenda, request approval to nominate and appoint the Florida School Board Association Advocacy Representative. Dr. Jenkins, you recognized? I'm sorry. Can we have a motion on the consent agenda?
They're moved.
Motion by Member Kesterdennel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair, all in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended? Please say aye.
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 Member Cobert?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes with all members present voting in the affirmative. Vice Chair Gold.
I'll take this off to speak, because this one's thicker than my other one. On the consent agenda was the approval of the new slate for the foundation board. And two of my fellow board members, and in fact, our leaders, are here this evening, Elise Barth and Jose Fernandez. Elise is the chair as of July 1, thanks to this motion just passing. And Jose is chair-elect. And I want to thank them for their service and all those that serve on the Foundation for OCPS, because you're part of the reason, and that board is part of the reason, that a report like this is so positive. We realigned the foundation several years ago, and everyone that is on that board has jumped in with both feet and both hands to align and make OCPS successful. And thank you very much.
Well said, Vice Chair. Well said. All right. Item 1701, Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. 1701 is actually the approval of the board for its advocacy representative for Florida School Boards Association. We have two that are willing to serve, that would be Member Angie Gallo as our representative and Member Johanna Lopez as the alternate. This was formerly noted as a legislative representative, they are now called advocacy representatives, and we would like the board's approval on that so that we can transmit your reps. Madam Chair.
Thank you. And since neither of them are present at this meeting, we won't have any, we won't have any objections. Is there a motion?
I'm moved to...
Okay, we have a motion from Member Kesterdennel. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second from Member Byrd. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Member Cobert?
Absolutely, aye.
Okay. Thank you. The motion passes with all members present voting in the affirmative. Now, we're going to take up Item 1702. Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That is for a disciplinary issue. I've asked Dr. Larson to come and share with the board this particular case.
All right. Thank you. And let me mention before we hear from Mr. Larson, that we do have Mr. Jimenez present with us, I believe, here in the chambers, who wishes to speak. So we'll hear from Mr. Jimenez as soon as we finish hearing from you. Mr. Larson, thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, and thank you.